Good evening. I'd like to open a town meeting. I am your town moderator, Robert Brutus Cantoreggi. At this time, I declare that the warrant has been duly posted and published and that the reading of the warrant is waived. I want to welcome you all for coming tonight. I always appreciate, we're in a small town, and this is how we get our government done. It's the oldest form of government, the United States, and we're still doing it because it works, so folks like you can come out here. So I appreciate you all coming tonight. One thing I'd like to do here is recognize a veteran among us that you might not know, and particularly someone that volunteers at the town. So tonight, I would like to introduce Peter Underhill. Real briefly, he served in the Army for ten years, and he did two tours in Iraq. So, appreciate that. And now I'd like everybody to raise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. So first, I'd like to introduce a couple of people. We have some state representatives here. First would be Senator Rebecca Rausch. Representative James Arena DeRosa. And Representative Marcus Vaughn. I'd also like to recognize our Select Board, Chairman Aaron Underhill, Craig Scholes, and Aaron Rosenfeld. Our Town Administrator, Mike Jazinski. Town Clerk Lisa Harden. And Town Council assisting me tonight will be Jason Talaman behind me, and Kate Federoff. And a very important committee in town is obviously our Finance Committee. These folks spend a lot of time going through recommendations and, well, going through the warrants and making recommendations. So, our first person is Mr...I can't see him down there. Oh, Mr. Barubi down in the middle, I'm sorry. Is it working?
Hello? Is he all right there?
No, I guess not. No. Yep.
Going right to your number two.
So we have Chairman Peter Underhill, we have Joyce Boyardi, we have Jonathan Lor, Kathy McGinnis, Sarah Reyes, John Stedman, and Mike Crone. The folks up here. Additionally, John Stedman is stepping down after his term, so we're going to be looking for a new member of the FinCom. So I encourage you, if you'd like to get more involved, figure out how the funding works in town, please contact, you can contact Mr. Barubi on the website, or also go through the Town Manager's office. And then finally, I just want to thank Kathy Smith and all the tellers up front. They do a wonderful job getting everybody in here, the Millis Police, the Millis Fire, the school, Jan Terrill staff, and the Public Works. Should we, we might need a deputy moderator, so to help keep things going tonight, I hereby nominate Jane McCaffery and Nathan Meltinsky. Mr. McCarthy and Ms. Nathan will be working on the other side over there. Can I get a second for that nomination?
Second.
Motion made in second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. There are a few items that require a two-thirds majority vote. Normally, I would have a standing count on such votes, but if, with the assistance of this body, I can be authorized to declare obvious two-third majority by voice. If you assent to allow me to do this, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion passes. Thank you. I just want to go over some general rules for town meetings, so we're kind of like all on the same page, okay? Obviously, we're governed by local bylaws and town meeting time. I will explain procedures as needed and will recognize requests as points of order. The first motion for each article will generally be made by the FinCom. Those who make motions will have the opportunity to explain the reason behind the motion. Motions and motions to amend generally must be in a writing provided that for clerk corrections. I will accept a friendly amendment, and we will help with the procedure of getting that done, okay? I will try to balance discussion as best I can, okay? Everyone has a chance to speak on a matter, but at a certain point, I want to avoid repetition, and I would ask that others do the same. We don't need to keep hearing the same old thing over and over again, okay? But if you really want to get up, we're going to hear you. There will be a maximum of five minutes when you come up to speak, okay? Three minutes for the second time, if you're the same person, like to speak again, okay? I may allow someone to speak a third time, but that's pretty much, if you can't get across in your first eight minutes, you know we're going to have a problem, so let's just try to get through that. Sincerely. All comments and questions come through the moderator. So you don't ask the Town Manager something, you don't ask Mr. Barubi. You ask me, and I'll direct who can answer the question, okay? Obviously, there's some excellent topics tonight, and I know some people are passionate about different things. They're both support and challenges that are presented. But you know what? I expect everybody to be respectful and civil to one another. We want to, we all want to hear the facts, and we all want your opinion. What I don't want is you think some, I don't want you to give someone else's opinion. It's your opinion. Comments should not be personal, and they're directed at an individual. In other words, be kind to your neighbor, okay? Even if you might not agree with them, okay? But be kind. We have many local officials between me and everybody else up here that should be able to answer most of the questions, hopefully. I will ask for a voice vote, you know, shouting it out, screaming, that doesn't make it, you know, we can figure that out, okay? If cannot discern a result, I may ask for a show of hands. If I still cannot figure out the hands thing, then we'll have to take a standing count. Regarding comments, there are folks across the way over in the cafeteria. Any comments that you would like to make, you need to come over to this side. We do not have mics set up over there, and you need to present yourself in front of me. So with that said, if you know you're going to speak on something, please come over, because I think everybody has, values their time here, okay? The other thing we have to do is standing count. I ask you to remain in your seated area, seating and stand. If you go in and out the doors, okay, I can't stop you from doing that, but that could mess up the vote, which means we have to do it again. And typically, if we have to do a standing vote, it's going to take ten to twelve minutes, okay? So please, you know, stay in your seat until we get the vote done. I'm not going to accept a motion to take articles out of order. I'm just going to say that right now. Some people like to move things up. We're not going to do that. Let's see. If I hear the same comments over and over again, you know, I'll probably have to just shut you down or move on. Hopefully, we can have an expedited town meeting, move things along, and get to our decisions at the end. There were some handouts up front on different topics. Hopefully, you might have got that. And then finally, I was asked by the historical side, who say there's going to be some tours starting here at nine o'clock on Saturday, historical tours to help a senior project out. So if someone would like to show up on Saturday, there's more information on the website. Thank you. First article?
Actually, I've got a few comments, just to get us started. Good evening, and thank you for attending town meeting. Likely, you've read the Finance Committee report mailed a couple of weeks ago, so I'll try not to repeat any too much of that written information. Since I interrupted Brutus on the introduction of the Finance Committee, and he botched a little bit, my fault, Brutus, I will introduce the Finance Committee. I'm Pete Barubi, this cycle's chairperson. Jody Garzan is our vice chairperson. Please raise your hand when I call your name. Peter Underhill is our clerk, Joyce Boyardi, Michael Crone, Jonathan Lor, Kathy McGinnis, Sarah Reyes, and John Stedman. As an update to the report that Brutus mentioned, since its publishing, we now have one opening on the committee. Mr. Stedman has completed his three-year term and will be leaving us. I want to publicly thank John for his service and to the town and his shared perspective. Thank you, Mr. Stedman. And while I'm giving thanks and perhaps publicly embarrassing people who aren't seeking recognition, I want to invite you to join me in congratulating Ms. Chris Fogerty, Recreation's Department Director, and Ms. Erin Underhill, the teen program coordinator for the recent accolades they garnered for outstanding program that they lead. Erin LeBlanc, what did I say? Underhill, she does a great job, too. Thank you for the correction. There's more. The Millis Recreation Department received the Regional Community Impact of the Year Award. This award is given to a town or city that is a member of the Massachusetts Recreation and Park Association that has provided outstanding service and dedication to their community. Ms. LeBlanc was also recognized as a Commonwealth heroine, Class of 2023. The Commonwealth Heroines Initiative identifies and honors extraordinary women from across the state. Erin was nominated by Representative James Arena DeRosa and Representative Marcus Vaughn. So congratulations to them both. Are they here? Erin and Chris? Could you stand up if you're here, Erin and Chris? Okay. Please congratulate them when you see them.
They're probably in the back.
They're a credit to Millis, and their service is not taken for granted. Lastly, before we proceed to the pressing business of the evening, I wanted to make a few general remarks. There are difficult choices to be made as a result of rising costs and constraints in funding. I don't think anyone, the Finance Committee has heard from or spoken to, spoken with, has taken this situation lightly. I know amongst the Select Board, the School Committee, or Finance Committee members, we don't agree 100% with one another, and nor should we. I'm a firm believer that the best solutions are reached when there's an exchange of ideas and civil discussion ensues. All of that to say, the collaboration that has occurred this year between the committees and the board has been the best I've experienced. FinCom members have attended and participated in their meetings, they've attended and participated in many of ours. For this, I want to say thank you to the municipal and district staffs, the School Committee, and Select Board, as well as my fellow Finance Committee members for their hard work. Thank you very much. Mr. Moderator?
Mr. Barubi.
We're going to go to Article One.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes.
I move that the town vote...can you hear me? I probably have a loud enough voice for everybody to hear without the mic. I move that the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of $1,611.11 and transfer the sum of $71.21 from sewer retaining earnings, and the sum of $6,553.27 from water retained earnings, for a total sum of $8,235.59 to pay the following unpaid bills incurred by the Town Department from previous fiscal years. Mr. Chair, uh, Moderator, do you want me to read each bill, or would you like me to say "as written"?
As written.
As written. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Is there any discussion on the motion?
Yes. This article is approved, if approved, as semi-annual articles to fund bills incurred in the previous years. The bills for this town meeting total $8,235.59 and will be funded for free cash, sewer, and water enterprises. These bills occur from previous years. The Finance Committee recommends approval of this article unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion on this? Okay, this vote requires a four-fifth majority, so all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Please come to the mic. I'm sorry, I was just told by Town Council I need to declare that unanimously. Awesome. I did forget about you folks, I'm not going to lie. I get nervous, you know? I'm just saying. Thank you, my assistant. Yes, sir.
I move that the town vote to transfer from the following accounts the sum of money listed below to fund additional wages and expenses to the accounts listed below, which were not sufficiently funded under Article III Operating Budget of the May 2, 2022 Annual Town Meeting. Transfer from Town General Government, $42,000. Transfer from Health and Human Services, $43,858.64. Transfer from Free Cash, $50,000 even, for a total of $135,858.64. To be transferred to General Insurance, $22,508. Public Safety, $61,271.10. Public Works, $11,079.54. Culture and Recreation, $41,000 even, for a total of $135,858.64. Second.
Motion made in second. Any further discussion?
Mr. Moderator?
Mr. Lor.
For Article Two, if approved, this article requests to transfer $135,858.64 from available funds to cover additional operating expenses for the fiscal year 2023 Operating Budget. This is a normal annual process to balance the operating budget before the fiscal year closes. The Finance Committee recommends approval of this article. The Finance Committee passes unanimously, nine to zero.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion on this? This vote requires a simple majority. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Cafeteria?
Unanimously.
Thank you. Motion passes unanimously.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes, sir.
I move that the town vote to fix the compensation of elected officers, provide for a reserve fund, and to raise and appropriate, including appropriations from taxation and by transfer from available funds, all as specified below, the sum of $41,855,721 to defray charges and expenses to the town, including debt and interest, and a reserve fund for the General Fund for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2023, as outlined in Table Two of the Finance Committee Report with the following revenue sources. Taxation, $39,840,187. Ambulance Fund, $616,000...excuse me, excuse me again, $616,356. Perpetual Care Interest, $332. Sale of Cemetery Lots, $7,285. Cell Tower Revenue, $55,776. Bond Premium Release, $102,515. Marijuana Impact Funds, Free Cash, $271,314. Free Cash, $233,453. And to authorize the following transfers. Sewer Fund Indirect Costs to General Fund, $255,439. Water Fund Indirect Costs to General Fund, $309,759. Stormwater Fund Indirect Costs to General Fund, $165,305.
A motion been made. Further discussion?
Mr. Moderator?
Yes, sir.
The town must adopt a balanced budget which provides sufficient resources within projected revenue. As should be widely known by now, the town faces nearly $2 million increase in school operating costs associated with special education. Like every school district in Massachusetts, Millis is required by law to meet the educational needs of all its students, including those requiring special accommodations or services. Those services may be met through either or both of two ways: additional specialty staffing at the schools, or, second, by use of out-of-district providers. When out-of-district placement is appropriate, the town is also responsible to provide transportation to and from those schools. Typically, special education costs vary from year to year as the number of students involved changes and/or the required level of accommodation changes as well. There is a formal and audited process to identify needs and resources for students requiring accommodation. For fiscal year '24, the additional special education staff required within Millis Public Schools will cost an additional $513,000 over fiscal year '23 costs. It should be noted that in fiscal year '23, Millis used some COVID relief, federal COVID relief funds and voted to use $316,000 in free cash to fund special education requirements. As those were finite appropriations, they will expire, and a new funding source must be identified. In terms of increases to out-of-district costs, Millis Public Schools anticipates the same number of placements in fiscal year '24 as there were in fiscal year '23. However, the tuition authorized statewide for out-of-district schools was increased 14% by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. Out-of-district cost increases averaged 1.9% over the last 10 years. However, during the pandemic, it was reported that private schools used federal COVID relief funds to increase pay for staff in order to maintain its employees. With that funding now gone, the state authorized a huge 14% increase so that private schools could retain employees. For Millis, the 14% tuition increases amounts to an additional $669,000 over FY '23 costs. Those are the basics of the cost side of the equation. The situation is no better on the revenue side. Despite the governor's proposal to fully fund the Student Opportunity Act and increase in statewide funding of $6.4 billion, and the biggest dollar amount increase for K-12 schools in Massachusetts history, the formula to allocate those funds equitably across the state does not benefit Millis. Millis' state aid for education is estimated to be a net decrease. The mainstay of state aid is known as Chapter 70 funding. It is planned for only a .66 increase, or $32,000. That's not per student, that is total $32,000 increase. While there are other smaller aid programs, they are relatively insignificant and are actually decreasing in FY '24, resulting in a net decrease of .54%, or nearly $29,000 less than FY '23. It is fair to state, it is, excuse me, it is fair to say that the state authorized tuition increase in its funding formula for educational aid resulted in an unfair, unfunded mandate for Millis. While other larger towns will receive millions in additional resources this year, Millis will be left to bridge a significant funding gap by transferring funds from other planned programs and laying off staff and faculty. The net result of what I just described is an approximate $2 million shortfall. While Millis has made written appeals to our elected state officials, the timeline for state assistance prior to the July 1 fiscal year start is extremely unlikely, if not impossible. Thus, we are on our own to pass a balanced budget within our means. The proposed budget does not propose tax increases beyond Proposition 2.5 limits. Thus, taxes will not increase as a result of the proposed budget, this proposed budget. Keep in mind that there are also anticipated and fairly routine increases to the schools' budgeted costs. Those include, but are not limited to approximately 4% in negotiated contractual increases, salary and wages, as well as inflationary increases to expenses like instructional supplies and utilities. The proposed budget includes the following seven major elements. Limited personnel cuts to staff and faculty across each of the schools. Proposed cuts are planned by a combination of planned attrition, elimination of recently vacated positions, reduction of hours, or outright layoff of encumbered positions for a total of approximately seven full-time equivalents. Also included are cancellation of raises for non-union staff. The proposed cuts result in approximately $500,000 in year-over-year personnel cut reductions. Number two, transfer of $538,697 from free cash to the educational budget line. This transfer is a single-year appropriation and does not result in a baseline revenue increase. Number three, transfer of $400,000 from stabilization to the education budget line. The stabilization, excuse me, the stabilization fund can be thought of as the town's rainy day savings account. This is also a single-year appropriation and does not result in a baseline revenue increase. Furthermore, the policy these funds will have to, by policy, these funds will have to be paid back within three years. The town's stabilization policy is worded as a goal, and states funds can be used for any lawful purpose, and typically be used only for unforeseen or emergency purposes. The stabilization fund goal is to maintain the account at 5% of the operating budget. Precedent for use of stabilization funds has already been set. The town has voted to authorize use of stabilization funds several times previously, usually for funding the snow and ice removal budget after surpassed, when it surpassed during the previous season. However, it has also been town meeting approved to use stabilization funds for equipment purchases, as in 2017, unspecified operating budget expenses in 2010 and 2014, and town building improvements in 2011. A town's bond rating can be affected by its stabilization fund. A better bond rating means better lending terms and cheaper access to capital. According to municipal bonding companies, withdrawal from stabilization funds alone does not signal weakness. Rather, having a stabilization fund policy and adhering to it signals sound management and fiscal resilience. The stabilization account balance is approximately $2.11 million, which is at or above the 5% goal. Number four, limited increased service level requests. As is routine during the spring budget cycle, departments make what is termed above service level requests. These requests represent proposed improvements or increases to the level of service beyond what is currently being provided, and typically involve an increase in staffing and associated costs. This year, the Select Board only included three such above-service-level requests in the town budget. They are 15 additional staff hours per week for the council on aging staff, increasing the town IT director to full-time, and an increase in funding for the DPW budget to offset indirect costs no longer charged to the enterprise funds. Number five, I only have seven. Number five, limited capital purchases. The Capital Planning Committee evaluated several projects and purchases for criticality and prioritized them for consideration by the Select Board. The Select Board limited the inclusion of projects in this budget so that free cash could be allocated to the budget shortfall. This will be described in further detail in Articles Four and Twelve. This is not optimum, as it could put the town behind on upkeep of capital items and equipment. It should be noted, however, that last fall town meeting approved funding of $500,000 in road and sidewalk improvements. That appropriation was made earlier in the calendar year so that work could begin at the start of this construction season. Number six, 6% budget growth. The Select Board proposes a 6% increase to the municipal and school budgets. The 6% versus standard 4% increase will allow the town to increase council on aging hours, increase IT hours to full-time, and bring enterprise direct costs in line with adopted recommendations. The resulting increase for the school amounts to $360,000, which will go towards the budget gap. And finally, number seven, post-community agreement on retail marijuana sales are included for the school, includes $174,000 in post-community agreement funding. The combination of the seven actions above are what we feel is the best way to fund the $2 million school budget shortfall. Said another way, this is the least bad budget proposal. Other options were considered. Tax override could have been proposed and voted tonight, which would, if passed, immediately raise taxes. That is not what we are voting on. Additional cuts to school staffing were considered but ultimately not put forth due to the detrimental effect on education. More significant cuts can be made, cannot be made, without severely impacting educational programming and academic performance, which would have lasting effects on the schools and the Millis community as a whole. This solution is a temporary fix. The increased sped costs are essentially permanent, so beyond this town meeting, there is more work to be done to develop a lasting, long-term solution which addresses the disparity between costs and available resources. Increased state aid must be part of the solution. Failure of the state to provide appropriate aid will result in a future round of more significant personnel cuts and/or a Proposition 2.5 tax override next year. The governor and legislature... The governor and legislature have signaled they are aware of the sped challenges and are considering supplemental budget proposals, which may provide some relief. Given the possibility for some additional state aid, perhaps late in fiscal year 24 or in fiscal year 25, it is not prudent to take more severe cuts now. I anticipate there are many questions which we are prepared to answer. The Select Board, the School Committee, the Finance Committee, Town Administrator, School Superintendent, Town and School Finance Directors, and many others are here to do just that. It is perfectly acceptable for detailed questions to be posed through the moderator, to the experts, and those responsible for leading and managing our town functions. However, I want to set realistic expectations regarding details of the personnel layoffs. The schools have a real plan, which they are prepared to enact once a budget is voted by you. They have shared some detail at numerous school and finance committee and Select Board meetings. Out of sensitivity and respect for those negatively affected by these cuts, utmost discretion will continue to be used, and by name and position details will not be provided in response to questions tonight. The Finance Committee recommends approval of Article 3 in an eight-to-one vote.
Mr. Moderator.
Yes.
I need to make a friendly amendment to the motion itself.
Go ahead.
Mr. Brubie stated that the sewer fund indirect cost to general fund was $255,439. It should be $253,439.
Chairman, could you repeat those numbers again? I'm sorry, I didn't.
Yep, Mr. Brubie said the sewer fund indirect cost to general fund was $255,439. It is actually $253,439.
Mr. Moderator.
Yes.
I agree with the friendly amendment and appreciate the correction.
Thank you. Is that written?
Yes.
Okay. Oh, so it is correct?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so the way the motion's written, the correct sum is there, so we don't need to take a vote on that. Before we move forward, would the selectman like to make any comments regarding this?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Yeah, I wasn't prepared. I didn't have anything written up, but that's never stopped me before, so we'll give it a go. We put a lot of effort, time, and thought into this, and I've heard from a lot of people about these cuts in this plan. I've heard people tell me that the Select Board represents the municipality, the municipal side of the budget. The School Committee represents the school budget. And every one of us sitting up here on the Select Board believes that's utter and completely wrong. We represent the town budget, and the schools are part of the town and they're in trouble. And this, not of their own making, they have a problem they didn't cause that needs to be solved. And we were fortunate enough to be able to increase the budgets by 6% across the board, which benefited the town. There's been absolutely no cut to any town services to fund this school problem. In fact, we increased town services. We increased the hours at the council on aging. We went further to clean up the allocations for the enterprise funds, and we've moved the IT director to full-time. All those things definitely benefit the town. We also were able to maintain almost every one of the capital items. There was a $100,000 item for the lights in the library that we're going to defer till next year. That's the only capital item that's not being funded that was on our high priority list. The plan in place with the free cash, so we didn't take free cash from other projects and put it into this. And the stabilization fund, as the Chair of the Finance Committee said, we've used it to fund, to pay unpaid bills in the past. $7,000 of unpaid bills was, the stabilization fund was used to pay $7,000 of unpaid bills in 2017. The most common recurring article in every warrant, for 27 years, the first article on every warrant I've seen has been unpaid bills. So the stabilization fund is an absolutely legitimate use, and I do a lot of bond financing. I do it for work. The auditors and the people looking at it, their view is how do you meet your, how do you follow your policies, not what is your balance? If we take this money out of stabilization and don't pay it back, we violated our policy. But by taking money out and paying it back, we prove that we live by our policy. And for the last, I think in the last 10 years, we've done just over a million, 1.1 million out of stabilization. We've always paid it back, and we'll continue to do that with this. So there really, as the chairman said, it's the best of, it's the least bad of bad situations. I wish we weren't in this position, but we have a plan that buys us one year for the seat, I'm looking at you now, to get this together and see if we can find a little bit more money to help us out. And we need a little bit more money, not $30,000. We need a little more than that, but we need some money to help this out. A few hundred thousand in a town of Milis goes a very, very long way, and that's what we're looking for. And then if we don't get that, we have a real issue next year at this time that we're going to have to decide how we fund. But this year, it buys us time to get there, and nothing we're doing is revolutionary or different than what we've done in the past. And we haven't made undue cuts to other areas.
Thank you, Ms. Schultz. Also, would anybody from the School Committee like to make any comments at this time? Okay, thank you. So how we're going to do this is I am going to read through the budget. I'm not going to read through every number. I'm going to read through each category. So if someone has a question or they'd like to make a comment about a specific department or category, please say "hold," and we'll mark that, then we'll go back and be able to come up and talk through them. Does everybody understand that? Okay. The first one would be the selectman's budget. Second would be the finance and accounting budget. Town council. Town clerk. Planning board. Zoning board. Town buildings. Fincom. Reserve fund. General insurance. Employee benefits. Public safety, we had the police department budget. Fire rescue department. Building department. Sealer, weights, and measures. Emergency management commission. Education. Middle schools. Tri-county school. Public works. Highway. Street lighting. Transfer station. Snow and ice. Health and Human Services. The Board of Health. Council on Aging. Culture and Recreation, we have the Memorial Day. The Legion. Recreation. Historical. Oak Grove Farm Commission. That's it. So we have two holds. Please come to the mic.
Mr. Moderator.
Yes.
We have one request hold for the Recreation Line.
If you could ask those folks to come over here so we can discuss. The first hold was on administration.
Mr. Moderator, Richard Harlow, 120 Orchard Street.
Yes, sir.
I have a question about the moving from a part-time to full-time IT position. My first question is, it's my understanding that the town currently shares the costs with the town of Norfolk. Is that correct?
Tom, Mr. Schultz.
Mike Kazinsky, Town Administrator, that's correct. The current IT director works 20 hours per week for the town of Milis and 15 hours a week for the town of Norfolk.
And the, Mr. Administrator, the money that we get from Norfolk, is that considered a revenue?
Yes, it is.
And, Mr. Moderator, is the money that we get as revenue, does that come off the budget as this position becomes full-time?
Ms. Jizki.
Yes, it does. It comes off our revenue estimates.
Thank you. So I was involved with the IT committee back in 2018, 2019, and at the time, we had no IT support in the town, so our committee members also acted as support. I was one of those people. We redesigned the IT systems in the town specifically, one specific goal was to reduce the amount of support that was required by outsourcing most or virtually all of the hardware in the town hall. It seems like we're going backwards, moving from a goal to eliminate those costs to increase in them beyond what seems reasonable. The police, fire have their own outsourced solutions. This position, I believe, would be primarily supporting the 22 to 25 employees in the town hall. Is that correct?
Ms. Jizki.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Actually, that individual does also provide support for the other departments, police and fire. There are some outside IT vendors that assist as well, but our IT director does assist those departments.
Mr. Moderator, I'd like to make a motion to amend the salary number for IT administration. I believe that 20 hours a week, the current amount of time, is sufficient for the needs of the town. Again, being involved with the IT committee for the town, putting the systems we did put in place to hopefully reduce the expenses from employee salary, I believe that moving from 20 to 40 hours, especially at a time of reducing other staff positions in the town, is a luxury we can't afford.
Thank you. I would need a specific number.
I'd like that number reduced to $42,545.
A motion's been made and seconded to amend it. Is that true? Do we have a second?
Yes.
Okay, motion made and seconded. Further discussion on this matter? Mr. Jizki.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Just a clarification, the position would not be changing from 20 hours to 40 hours. It'd be 20 to 35. I'd also have a procedural question, Mr. Moderator, in that if the budget was actually reduced, what that would end up doing is requiring us to either way stop providing those services for the town of Norfolk, because it's not a change of budget, it's a change of revenue.
Thank you. Is there further discussion?
Mr. Moderator.
Ms. Schultz.
Yeah, I'd like to explain why the Select Board chose to move this from 20 hours to 35 hours, pretty aside the procedural issue that's there. The IT director is doing more than just, and I worked, I was CIO at a YMCA, so I worked with technology quite a bit. So they're doing more than just break, fix, system management, and desktop maintenance. They're actually going out and getting grants. We've been able to receive grants that have funded a whole lot of our, a great deal of our, of our infrastructure. So that's taken money that we're not paying for software, for hardware, for all these grants that are being brought in. At halftime on 35 hours, it's very, very, very hard for us to get those grants, so it's going to end up, we saw this as basically revenue neutral at worst. Secondly, we're trying to bring on many more online resources, licensing's, permitting's, all of those things that other towns have on their websites that allow them to do business online. At 15 or 20 hours a week, we weren't able to get that done. So this has moved well beyond the scope of just maintaining the existing hardware. This has become a enhancement to the town and a revenue generator for the town. So I speak in objection to the amendment, basically.
Mr. Moderator.
Sir.
We also had explored bringing in outsourced resources to be able to fill the gap between what a part-time position could supply and what a full-time position could supply. You're still proposing 35 hours a week. That leaves a gap of five hours per week unsupported, as well as the potential for this person, when he's sick, who supports the town? When he goes on vacation, who supports the town? I believe the town would be better served with a mix of a part-time position and outsourced support, and that would allow the part-time person to be able to focus more on things like grants and new initiatives, where he doesn't have to worry about, I gotta move it, the outsourced support issue. So I do not believe that moving to a full-time position alone is in the best interest of the town. I think we can.
Thank you.
Achieve more.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? Okay, I'm going to call for a vote. This vote is for the amendment only. So reducing the salaries under treasurer collector from, by $35,000.
IT.
IT. What? IT, I'm sorry.
IT by $35,000. All those in favor of the amendment, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Thank you. Cafeteria?
Mr. Moderator, the cafeteria voted in that as a against.
Thank you. The next hold was, okay, procedure-wise, I want to announce that the motion failed. So we're back to the original budget on that item. The next hold I had was council on the aging.
Hi, Mr. Moderator. My name's Carolyn McNiff, 31 Timberline Road, Milis.
Thank you.
I wondered if you could just give a brief explanation of what's going on with this budget item. Salary increases, what, how many positions we have, part-time, are they part-time, are they full-time with benefits? You know, so looking at like a 15% increase in the salaries.
Thank you. Ms. Jizki.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The increase in wages in that department is purely by the personnel plan and the union employees in that department. The one change of note is the increase in the hours of the, of a position that's currently the outreach worker. That position would be increased from up to 35 hours, and it would be now an outreach worker and a program manager. As, for those who have really looked at the council on aging budget over the years, they have been understaffed, and the staff has been really tested to try to provide the services needed, and the Select Board has made this the highest priority for this year to try to get some additional services for the seniors. But the main, main increase is the additional 15 hours for that. the seniors. But, the main, the main increase is the additional 15 hours for that position.
Can you be more specific-
Excuse me, through the moderator.
Mr. Moderator, can we, can we get specifics on the services?
What kind of specifics you looking for?
There, I was told there was an increase in the services and that it requires an additional 15 hours. So, and I'm just wondering what the specifics are on that.
Go ahead, Ms. Jizki.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. This will provide additional support for the senior director in the area of program management and oversight. Most communities have a dedicated program manager. We do not have that, and that has stretched the ability of the senior director to be able to provide all the necessary services and oversight to the whole department. So, this will provide assistance with the program management and of the operations.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Any further discussion on recreation? I mean, oh, council on aging. Thank you. Our final one is recreation. I'm sorry, I got ahead of myself. There was a hold on that?
Good evening. Thank you. Tim Davis, 23 Pleasant Street. Through you, Mr. Moderator. My question is regarding the program coordinator position. Currently, that position is paid out of host agreement funds, but these funds are set to expire. So, I'm curious to see if there's been any discussion on how to maintain this position, as it's evident in the awards this department is receiving from this position, that it's become a very important part of the recreation department. So, if there's any discussion further, once these funds go away, what we're doing with that position.
Mr. Schultz.
That's a real good question. It's going to be hap, it's going to be really important in FY '25, I believe, when those funds start to leave. And it's not just the, the rec department gets a, an amount of them, but there's a school resource officer in the police department, there's guidance counselors in the schools. There's several hundred thousand dollars of funding that we have to find a solution for. And, we haven't gone down that road with this year's budget, but it's something we've been talking about, and we will definitely have a plan in place for next year's budget, because that's when it will hit. But, at this point, it doesn't impact this year yet, and we had enough other items that are hitting this year that we, while we've talked about it, we haven't really proceeded down the road of solutions yet. But, it will be the, probably one of the top items for next year's budget.
Thank you.
Thank you. I also like to thank Mr. Barubi for doing an excellent job beginning, getting a lot of, I think, questions answered before their rose regarding our operating budget. Is there any other comments? Can I call for a vote on this? This is a simple majority vote. Alls in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Cafeteria?
Cafeteria votes in favor overwhelmingly.
For the record, one person voted against it. Besides that, it was unanimous. Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Moderator.
Yes, sir.
I move that the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of $538,697 for supplemental funding for the school department. Said supplemental funding being intended to support special education-related services for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2023.
Further discussion?
Mr. Moderator.
Yes, sir.
As previously explained, the budget includes transfer of $538,697 from free cash as supplemental funding for the school department. This article is meant to clarify and reinforce the intent of town meeting by stating that free cash dollars transferred to the school budget shall be used for costs associated with special education. It is the intent of the Finance Committee that if supplemental funding is received from the state or another source in fiscal year '24, which aids in closing the budget gap, that free, that the free cash transfer discussed here not be spent or reallocated for another purpose without appropriate approval from the town.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? Cafeteria?
No discussion request.
Okay, I'll call for a vote on this. Once again, this is a simple majority. Alls in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Cafeteria?
Overwhelmingly in favor.
Motion passes overwhelmingly.
Mr. Moderator.
Yes, sir.
I move that the town vote to transfer from stabilization fund the sum of $400,000 for supplemental funding for the school department. Said supplemental funding being intended to support special education-related services for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2023.
Second.
Motion made second. Further discussion?
Mr. Moderator.
Yes, sir.
Similarly, Article 5 is also meant to reinforce the intent of town meeting that stabilization fund transfer to the school budget shall be used for costs associated with special education. It is the intent of the Finance Committee that if supplemental funding is received from the state or another source in fiscal year '24, which age, aids in closing, in closing the budget gap, that the stabilization fund resources not be spent or reallocated for another purpose without appropriate approval of the town. Furthermore, it is the intent of the Finance Committee that the $400,000 transfer be restored within three years per the stabilization fund policy.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? Seeing there's none?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry, sir.
Kevin McCarthy, Exchange Street.
Yes, sir.
Now, we gotta pay this back in three years. We're still gonna have the $2 million shortfall next year, as I understand. How is this gonna be paid for through the school? I would seem, think that we should have a plan that, if we gotta reduce the cost at the school, that we try and keep that down, maybe one position or two, and look at other places in town to eliminate positions rather than at the school. And, the kids that we're affecting here are the ones that are most in need in the whole school system. And, I think we should look elsewhere to cut costs in the town rather than the positions at the school. Now, I don't know how we're gonna pay for this, and nobody seemed to come up with an answer on how we're gonna pay for this two and three years down the road. We're pushing it down the road, but we don't have any, any plan as to pay for it back. If somebody can explain that to me.
Thank you. Would someone like to address that?
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Barubi.
The, the budget that we're working on, that we're, that town meeting is voting on tonight is fiscal year '24, and, and some of the questions raised by the gentleman have been alluded to. There is work to be done. We understand that this is a temporary solution, and there are, when, when this problem comes to us for the fiscal year '25 budget, which we plan to start work on that in July, we're not waiting. We know that there, this is a temporary solution, and the problem will be here next year. Based on my earlier comments, our representatives and the state rep, state administration has recognized that there's a problem with special education funding and how the resources are allocated. That does not help us for this year, but we do not advocate for more severe cuts across the town or across the schools when there's the potential for additional state aid to help with that solution for next year. In terms of cuts being made to the school, those cuts will not be in special education. So, in terms of cuts being made affecting the, potentially the students that need the help the most, special education requirements are, are to be provided by law. So, there will not be cuts to the special education budget. All of these changes or actions that are recommended in this budget are to ensure that Millis provides the services required for students needing special education. The avenues that the town could explore for next year's budget in terms of how to pay for a potential and a very likely budget deficit next year are a tax override or further cuts, which would be, they would need to be greater than the cuts that are proposed this year, most likely. It all, a lot of that depends on the aid that comes from the state, which could come during fiscal year '24, or it could be part of the fiscal year '25 budget.
Thank you. Ms. Schultz.
Yeah, I just would like to clarify one point. The deficit at this point is $200,000. We addressed a half million of it with the cuts the school has made already, before we even started tonight, and then $360,000 was passed in the budget. So, that's a permanent increase to the base. We're gonna be looking at about $900,000 next year, and I know it's still a lot of money, but it's not the 2 million, and when you're off by 100%, I, it's, it's a significant amount. So, it's 900,000. So, my hope is, if the state can come through with a large enough mon, amount, not 30,000, but maybe tack on a zero, then we can start having a logical discussion about how we as a town continue to solve it. So, again, it's not just kicking it down the road, it's buying one more year of education for the kids that are in school without impacting them. It's, it's buying time for the state to address this as a serious need, buying time for us to plan what we can as a town to cover whatever gap may exist. So, there are good reasons to move it down the year. There's $938,000 we need to find right now in today's dollars. Hopefully, over, between now and a year from today, we can close a large portion of that gap.
Thank you.
Mr. Moderator.
Yes, sir.
I wanted to address one more point in the question that was posed, and I, and perhaps I heard this wrong, but I believe the gentleman stated that the school would have to pay this money back from stabilization. It's, that money will not be paid back from the school. That money will be paid back from the town. The town would have to make, over the course of three years, whether it be a single deposit or transfer back into the stabilization fund for $400,000 or any combination, as long as it's paid back within three years. But, it will come from the town's budget, which includes the school, but not directly from the school.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion?
Amy Fagan, Timberline Road. I just wanted to add a comment. My daughter, Maura, has been a recipient of special education for 17 years now, and she has done amazing, well, I don't do well with public speaking, so sorry. Not only are the special educators part of the process and the benefit to the students, but all the, all the teachers, the support she's received from Mr. Mulaney, you know, the Learning Center, Mr. Grabey, you know, Mr. Caulfield, the list goes on. And, I'm here to tell you that she was in college this year, thanks to the special education program, and she just won a competition called Miss Amazing for Young Ladies with Disability, and she won for the state of Massachusetts, so she'll be representing Millis and the state of Massachusetts at the national competition this year. Thank you for that. Thank you for her. She wouldn't be where she is today without this support. And, I tried to get her to come tonight so she can speak, because she actually does love getting up in front of a crowd. And, I was explaining to her in terms that she could understand about the budget, and her suggestion was, well, can't we have a bake sale? So, you know, while special education may not be directly impacted, all of the teachers are, and this school is, is really amazing, and the support, as I said, that she's gotten has been phenomenal. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. For the closer, she was one of the best kids I ever coached for like six years. Love, love more. Tell her I said hi. So, is there any further discussion? Sir?
411 Union Street. I would hope that state reps that are here tonight will do whatever they can next year so they can fund it, we can get the money, so we're not back here again. And, hopefully, one or two of them can be present at our FinCom and our Select Board meetings, which they weren't this year. I didn't see them. So, hopefully, they can, they can do everything they can to get that money to help, to help us out. Thank you.
They're sitting right up here. Go over and say hi, introduce yourself, because you vote them. Okay?
Charlie, this is 14%.
I, I, sorry. Ma'am?
Mr. Moderator, Pat Shogren, 642 Main Street. We're not speaking against special ed. I want you to understand that. But, we're speaking as a budget for the whole town, and I am really against using the stabilization fund for this. Last year, we contributed $361,000 as a town, voted at town meeting, to help with the deficit. This year, you're coming back with five times that amount of money as a deficit. There's something wrong there. We just heard from the previous speaker something I had not heard before. We're looking at more funding being reduced, and therefore, well, we're gonna start looking at this in July and see what we can do about that. That, to me, is just saying over and over and over again, we're gonna come back to the pot once again next year, more, more, more. At some point, we have to say, I'm sorry. At some point, we have to say, no. And, I think for the stabilization fund this time, we have now contributed $1 million towards the deficit. The school has also reduced by 500,000. I think this is a time, at least for this 400,000, we say, no, not this year. Thank you.
Thank you. Sir?
Zach Golden, 363 Exchange. I, I definitely agree. I heard your story about your daughter being in the program. My sister works not here, but in Medway in the special ed department, and I've heard her tell stories about her students really appreciate her being there for them. And, another one that I just came up with, I work in Easton, and I don't work in that department, but my office is right next to one of the areas where they work, and I hear them, the special ed teachers, helping the students in one of their Math Advantage programs all the time. And, so, they really do a lot of work to make sure that those students can get through the program and be successful, and I really agree that we need to make sure that we have those positions. So, thank you.
Thank you. Ma'am?
Hi, Shana Canastreri, 9 Pearl Street. I just wanted to say that this is a mandate, and the town of Millis has to pay these tuitions. So, the money has to come from somewhere. We are already voting on something that is going to eliminate seven full-time employees. And, for that, that's devastating for our small school system. It's devastating for the children who come every day, whether it is an administrator, if it's someone in the cafeteria, if it's a coach, if it's a program that's getting cut, if it's their teacher. So, I think the fact that we need to realize this is mandated, we have to pay it. We are going to have seven people gone next year. If we don't pass stabilization, it could be 17. It could be 27. We have to think about the fact that there is a bigger picture here other than the money. The money is definitely hard. It's a hard situation. We are unfortunate in how the formula works where we're getting funding, and there's never enough funding, especially when it comes to special education. But, we need to vote yes to support this. We need to say, we are going to fight as a town for the next year. We're going to fight for the seven full-time employees that we are going to have to say goodbye to, and for the future ones that we may need to. We cannot just say no. We have to say yes, support this. For our children and for the teachers who love them for the past five years through COVID, when they were basically acting as their teacher, they were acting as their best friend, their family members. Families were imploding during COVID. Where they got, were safe, they were safe in their schools with their teachers, who were also acting as nurses and social workers, therapists, you name it. They were doing all these things while trying to operate under a pandemic with their own families. So, please consider voting yes.
Thank you. Further discussion? Sir?
Mr. Moderator, Jack Fitzgerald, 131 Plain Street. This is something that was easily predictable, and so, it's easy to blame it on the state and say that they passed these mandates, and now we have to come up with the money for the special ed, so we don't have enough money for everything else. But, this was all foreseeable, and the town chose to gild the lily with that $56 million school. They wasted millions and millions and millions of dollars, and now they're in the hole, and- of dollars, and now they're in the hole. And it seems they don't even have enough money to hire the teachers to-
Sir, I ask you to stay on subject, not previous-
So I am opposing the transfer from the stabilization fund. And I ask everyone to join it. It's not appropriate to be using it. And the word is that they're going to be coming for a two and a half, probably two and a half increase, and there's going to be more stabilization drawdowns. This is a problem that has to be addressed now. I think that what the board is doing is trying to kick this down the road.
I would ask you not to make-
Sir, sir, I respect what you're saying, but I'd ask you not to make an opinion of
the select board. You can make your own opinion. We do not know how the select board, but they can answer for themselves.
Very well. I've made my point. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Scholz?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. We're not kicking it down the road. We're taking one year to try to have time to solve the problem. To say this was totally predictable, I spoke to Representative James Arena DeRosa in the hallway. It's nice talking to him. But he said, we were the first town that alerted him to this problem. Town after town after town has now started realizing that they're having the same exact issues we are. My son works in a school district that just passed an override. We chose not to go for two and a half override, to try to give time to come up with a solution that is not a two and a half override. We've also, the school committee, the finance committee, and the select board have unanimously said, we're not going to stabilization next year. If I go to stabilization next year, I'm up for reelection. Vote me out. All right, flat out. We are not going to stabilization again. This is a one-time deal. And we've used stabilization to treat it like some sacrosanct number that we can't touch. That $2 million isn't on a shelf for us to look at. It's on a shelf for us to use when we have problems. We used $800,000 for snow and ice removal over 10 years, from over seven years, from 2010 to 2017. Don't tell me you don't expect it to snow in New England. We've never used stabilization fund for the school before in its history, ever. That's unexpected. We used it for snow removal in New England. For God's sakes, it snows. I grew up in the Midwest. It didn't snow as much, but it snows here. And we used it. And we paid it back. We paid it back every time within the three years. We also used, as I said, for unpaid bills. Totally appropriate. I'm not saying any of these things are inappropriate uses. I think they are. And I think this is an appropriate use also. We bought fire department equipment with it. We trained our paramedics with this money. We trained our ALS paramedics with this money. Critical town need, great use of stabilization. And you know what? We paid it back. And that's what we're going to do with this. This is not going to be going back to this well again. We're not going to be asking for this again. I'm hoping there's a solution. I'm hoping there's a way we can do this. And this gives us time without laying off seven more teachers right now.
Thank you, Ms. Scholz. Ma'am?
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Moderator. Judy O'Gara, 63 Van Cleek. To that point that you're making about we've paid it back, I think, I'm just curious and would like some clarification about when we've paid it back in the past, how has that process worked? And if we're looking at a shortfall next year, how are we going to pay it back? And I just want more details on that. I'm not, I'm supportive of special education, obviously, but curious as to how we're going to pay it back.
Ms. Scholz?
We've paid it back in a number of ways, but most typically, it's paid back with the free cash that comes in the following year. So you take one-third of this amount, and you pay it each year with the free cash that comes in. This year, we had over $2 million of free cash. We're talking about using 100-something thousand to pay back this for the next three years. It's, that's typically the way we do it. Any revenue that comes in through normal taxation could be directed to it. This isn't a stretch to pay this back. This is not the deepest we've ever gone into stabilization in the past. It can be done. It could easily be done over three years. We typically have been able to do it in one year in most cases. So it's, I'm not as concerned about the payback. And that won't be done through taxation increase. That won't be done through, it'll be done through free cash most likely. But I can't speak to what it'll be for the next three years for sure.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion?
No.
Okay, I'm going to call the vote. Because we're using stabilization funds, it's a two-thirds majority vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Cafeteria?
Voice vote of two-thirds is taken.
I declare the motion passes by more than two-thirds.
Mr. Moderator?
Sir?
I move that the town vote to ratify the following collective bargaining agreements: Town of Milis and the SEIU Local 888, Professional Firefighters of Milis Local 4704, and Ask Me Council 93 Local 3901, all to be retroactive to July 1, 2022, or take any other action in relation thereto.
Second.
Most remain second. Further discussion?
Mr. Moderator, ratification at town meeting of these collective bargaining agreements is mandated under state law and allows for the agreements to be funded.
Thank you. Is any further discussion? Civil majority. Alls in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Cafeteria?
Pass unanimously.
Thank you. Vote passed unanimously.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes, ma'am.
I move the town vote to raise and appropriate from Sewer Department receipts the following sums to operate the Sewer Enterprise Fund beginning July 1, 2023. Salaries, wages, $306,574; expenses, $1,331,252, for a total of $1,637,826, and a simple majority is required.
Second.
Most remain second. Further discussion?
Mr. Moderator?
Yes, ma'am.
This article appropriates funding, including funds for personnel costs, contract expenses, and debt service necessary to operate the town's sewer service and infrastructure. This utility enterprise is funded by sewer user fees based on metered or estimated usage. Also, for a detail of the Sewer Enterprise salaries, wages, and expenses, please see page 25 of the warrant.
Thank you. Any further discussion? As state's civil majority, alls in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Cafeteria?
Motion carries unanimously.
Clear the motion carries unanimously.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes, ma'am.
I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate from Water Department receipts the following sums to operate the Water Enterprise Fund beginning July 1, 2023. Salaries and wages, $362,396; expenses, $1,647,340, for a total of $2,9,736, and a simple majority is required.
Second.
Most remain second. Further discussion?
Mr. Moderator?
Yes, ma'am.
This article appropriates funding, including funds for personnel costs, contract expenses, and debt service necessary to operate the town's water service and infrastructure. This utility enterprise is funded by water rate payer user fees based on metered or estimated usage. And also, for a detail of the Water Enterprise expenses, salaries and wages, please see page 24 of the warrant.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Civil majority. Alls in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Cafeteria?
Motion carries unanimously.
Motion carries unanimously.
I get the easy ones.
I know.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes, ma'am.
I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate from Stormwater Department receipts the following sums to operate the Stormwater Enterprise Fund beginning July 1, 2023. Salaries and wages, $244,697; expenses, $482,036, for a total of $726,733. A simple majority is required.
Second.
Most remain second. Further discussion?
Mr. Moderator?
Yes, ma'am.
This article appropriates funding, including funds for personnel costs, contract expenses, and debt service necessary to operate the town's storm drain system. The Utility Enterprise Fund is funded by impervious square footage fees calculated to each property. And for a detail of the Stormwater Enterprise salary, wages, and expenses, please see page 26 of the warrant.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Once again, civil majority. Alls in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Cafeteria?
The motion carries unanimously.
The motion carries unanimously. Hey, we're halfway there. Just keeping track. Number 10.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes, ma'am.
I move that the town vote to approve the items as written in the warrant as Consent Article 10.
Second.
Most remain second.
Mr. Moderator?
Further discussion?
These four consent articles each require annual approval at town meeting. The first article amends the Schedule A Salary Plan, which can be found on page 27 of the FinCom report, and Schedule C Employee Benefits of the Town of Milis Personnel Plan, which is provided on pages 29 to 33, for non-union employees effective July 1, 2023. The Salary Plan includes a 2% cost of living adjustment for the non-union employees that currently fall under this Salary Plan. The changes to benefits will bring the Personnel Plan in line with collective bargaining agreements. The Plan currently includes three full-time employees: the DPW Director, the Council on Aging Director, and the Assistant Town Administrator, as well as other part-time and stipend positions. The second article within Article 10 authorizes the Board of Health to appoint any of its members to another town officer position for which it has appointing authority. The town is required to pass this article each year for the Board of Health, according to state law. The third article, as part of Article 10, authorizes the town to use revolving funds that have their own sources of revenue to be accounted for separately from other town funds. These town functions are mostly self-funding, and they may spend their revenues without additional appropriations up to the limits that are authorized by the town. And the fourth article within Article 10 allocates community preservation funds into various reserve funds as required in the Community Preservation Act for administrative expenses, community preservation projects, and/or other expenses in fiscal year 2024. The Finance Committee unanimously recommends approval of this consent article.
Thank you. Being these are consent articles, there is no discussion on these, unless seven people would like to get up and pull one of the four out of here to discuss. So I will read off, so there's four of them here. Consent article number 10. Sorry. The one has to do with the benefits to the Salary Plan. Anybody? Board of Health Appointment Members? Authorization Revolving Funds for Chapter 44. Community Preservation Fund. Cafeteria, is anybody yet seven over there?
I would say, no. Proposed is zero.
Okay. Excellent comment. So I'm going to call the vote on this. Since there's no discussion, it's a simple majority. Alls in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Cafeteria?
The motion carries unanimously.
The motion carries unanimously. And I'd like to thank Town Council for explaining that to me, because I had not heard that before.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer the sum of $35,000 from the Community Preservation Open Space Reserve Fund for the Oak Grove Farm Trail Improvement Project.
Second.
Most remain second. Further discussion?
This article approves funding from the Community Preservation Fund Open Space Account to fund building of trail infrastructure in Oak Grove. The work includes addressing serious drainage issues adjacent to Island Road and Ridge Streets, constructing boardwalks through wetlands, and improving the trail surface in places. All work will comply with the Wetlands Protection Act and will make them usable year-round. It has no impact on the current operating budget. The Community Preservation Fund is funded by the Community Preservation Act tax, which is included in your property taxes and is partially matched by the state. These funds can only be used for open space, historic preservation, or housing, and cannot be used for maintenance. In the previous article, you approved funding this, the open space portion, for $33,509. We recommend unanimously that this be approved.
You mentioned $33,000. I'm looking at $35,000 in the warrant.
The previous article, the funding under number four for open space was $33,509 that we're putting into the fund. This allocates $35,000 for trail improvements.
Thank you. Is any further discussion? Civil majority. Alls in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Cafeteria?
The motion carries unanimously.
The motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes, sir.
I move that the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of $43,606, and transfer from the Water Enterprise Reserve Fund the sum of $178,704, and transfer from the Sewer Enterprise Reserve Fund the sum of $153,427, and transfer from the Stormwater Enterprise Reserve Fund the sum of $15,798, and transfer from Article 34 of the Annual Town Meeting of May 9, 2016, the sum of $6,900, and transfer from Article 9 of the Annual Town Meeting of November 5, 2018, the sum of $30,515, and transfer from Article 12 of the Annual Town Meeting of May 13, 2019, the sum of $20,000 even, and transfer from Article 12 of the Annual Town Meeting of May 13, 2019, the sum of $3,000, and transfer from Article 12 of the Annual Town Meeting of May 13, 2019, the sum of $4,179, and transfer from Article 12 of the Annual Town Meeting of May 13, 2019, the sum of $810, and transfer from Article 3 of the Annual Town Meeting of November 8, 2021, the sum of $2,274, and transfer from Article 25 of the Annual Town Meeting of May 9, 2016, the sum of $2,292, excuse me, $2,292, and transfer from Article 9 of the Annual Town Meeting of November 5, 2018, the sum of $500, and transfer from Article 3 of the Annual Town Meeting of November 8, 2021, the sum of $221, and transfer from Article 13 of the Annual Town Meeting of May 2, 2022, the sum of $52,337, and transfer from the Article 4 of the Annual Town Meeting of November 10, 2022, the sum of $2,999, and transfer from Article 16 of the Annual Town Meeting of June 5, 2017, the sum of $43,162, and transfer from Article 27 of the Annual Town Meeting of May 9, 2016, the sum of $35,475, and transfer from Article 28 of the Annual Town Meeting of May 9, 2016, the sum of $4,000, and transfer from Article 23 of the Annual Town Meeting of June 8, 2015, the sum of $8,454, and transfer from Article 29 of the Annual Town Meeting of May 13, 2013, the sum of $15,680, and transfer from Article 11 of the Annual Town Meeting of November 5, 2012, the sum of $14,977, and transfer from Article 21 of the Annual Town Meeting of May 14, 2012, the sum of $19,447, for a total sum of $658,757.
You need to take a break?
To fund the following capital items. Moving along. Let's go. In the Department of Public Works, Water, Sewer, and Stormwater, a dump truck with a plow and sander of $95,527. In the Department of Public Works, Water, Sewer, and Stormwater, heavy-duty 10-ton trailer of $23,000. The library, library envelope repairs totaling $30,500. School, wireless upgrade of $68,000. Sewer Enterprise Fund, fiscal year 24, infiltration and inflow investigation, $137,630. Water Enterprise, well number three, PFAS final design, $272,900. Water Enterprise, chlorine pH analyzer replacement, $31,000. Water Enterprise chlorine pH analyzer replacement, thirty-one thousand, two hundred dollars, for a total of six hundred fifty-eight thousand, seven hundred and fifty-seven dollars, and to authorize the Select Board to dispose of old vehicles or equipment by outright sale, trade, auction, or otherwise, and that the proceeds from such disposal be applied to the purchase price of the vehicle or equipment, or take any other action in relation thereto.
Second. A motion been made second, I'm afraid to ask if there's further discussion.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Orr.
For Article twelve, if approved, request the town to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds six hundred and fifty-eight thousand, seven hundred and fifty-seven dollars to fund seven capital requests for multiple departments for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-four. Each fiscal year, the Capital Planning Committee goes through a process to review and prioritize the capital requests for each department. This process helps the Select Board determine which capital items will be considered at town meeting. The Finance Committee recommends approval of this article. The Finance Committee passed this unanimously, nine to zero.
Thank you. I'd also like to note, I appreciate the fact you went back all the way to two thousand and twelve. Define "old money."
Correct.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? This is simple majority. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Cafeteria?
The motion carries unanimously.
Uh, motion carries unanimously here too. Thank you.
Mr. Moderator.
Yes, ma'am.
I move that the town vote to borrow under the provisions of Massachusetts General Law, Chapter forty-four, or any other enabling authority, the sum of six hundred and fourteen thousand, six hundred and five dollars for the lease last purchase of up to six buses for the Millis Schools.
Second.
Requires a two-thirds majority vote.
Motion made second. Further discussion?
Mr. Moderator.
Yes, ma'am.
This article is authorizing the town to enter into a five-year lease agreement for up to six new replacement buses in the amount of six hundred fourteen thousand, six hundred and five dollars for the Millis Public Schools. The first year cost of one hundred and twenty-two thousand, nine hundred and twenty-one dollars is included in Article Three FY twenty-four operating budget on page twenty under Millis Schools. At the completion of the five-year lease, four buses will be returned, and two buses will be available for purchase for one dollar. There are currently nine buses in the school fleet. Of the current nine buses, four of these buses will be returned for lease renewal, two buses will be purchased for one dollar, and up to two buses will be retired due to age. One of the two buses up for retirement is currently twenty years old. It should be noted that the average life expectancy of a school bus is twelve to fifteen years. Millis Schools is able to surpass this use expectancy with their own buses due to the care and maintenance of their fleet. It should also be noted that due to the rising cost of these leases between the time of estimate of the lease cost and when we will actually sign the lease, it is likely that we will only be able to lease four or five buses instead of six being authorized in this article. This would reduce the size of the school bus fleet from nine to eight buses. The Finance Committee voted to approve this article, eight to one.
Thank you. Any further discussion? As stated, it's a two-thirds majority vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Cafeteria?
Two-thirds majority.
Thank you. Two-thirds majority passes.
Mr. Moderator.
Yes, ma'am.
I move that the town vote to borrow under the provisions of Massachusetts General Law, Chapter forty-four, or any other enabling authority, the sum of sixty-six thousand, nine hundred and eleven dollars for the lease last purchase of one police cruiser. This requires a two-thirds majority. Second.
Motion made second. Any further discussion?
Mr. Moderator.
Yes, ma'am.
This article is authorizing the town to enter into a three-year lease-to-purchase agreement for one new replacement police cruiser in the amount of sixty-six thousand, nine hundred and eleven dollars. The first year cost of twenty-two thousand, three hundred and three dollars and sixty-seven cents is included in Article Three FY twenty-four operating budget on page eighteen under Police Department. The cruiser will be available for purchase for one dollar after the completion of the third year of the lease. The cost of the vehicle includes the prisoner transport containment and lighting, the lettering, computer, computer-aided dispatch software, record management system CJIS, printer, radio, and other specialized equipment are purchased separately and are paid for by grants with Chief Sipoyar secures on behalf of the department for the replacement cruiser. The current wait time for this new cruiser is between four to eight months. When Chief Sipoyar was appointed as Chief of Police in two thousand and sixteen, he implemented a fleet replacement plan which would ensure that the cruisers would be replaced every seven years to avoid costly and out-of-warranty repair bills for the town. The department is requesting this cruiser to maintain the current placement schedule and ensure an operational fleet for the public safety and so that the town is not burdened with the cost of replacement of several cruisers in one single year. The Finance Committee voted unanimously to approve this motion.
Thank you. Further discussion, sir?
Mr. Moderator.
Yes, sir.
It should be relatively free from discussion, uh, needing a new police cruiser, but in light of the, uh, support of Article fifteen, uh, for the zero emissions, I think that it would be hypocritical to have air conditioning in that police cruiser. So I, uh, move to amend Article fourteen to add language, provided said police cruiser shall not be equipped with air conditioning, or its air conditioning shall be disabled before delivery. Do I have a second? It's been seconded.
Who's, who's seconded? Okay, motion made second.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I, I, I really want to avoid hypocrisy with this Article fifteen, with virtue signaling.
Let's, uh, sorry, let's, let's stay on Article fourteen, the amendment on the floor.
I'm prefacing my comments about Article fourteen because you replace Article fifteen.
I, I understand that, but we're gonna, we're gonna go with the amendment first.
Okay, so I want, I don't want to be spending money from this town to emit carbon gases into the Town of Millis while police cruisers are idling if the town is of the view that we should have a zero-carbon emissions policy. So let's not virtue signal, and let's get right down to business.
Mr. Moderator, thank you.
Mr. Moderator.
Thank you.
Mr. Moderator.
Thank you.
Point of order, Mr. Moderator?
Yes, sir.
Um, since we in the cafeteria are unable to identify the previous speaker, could you please ask him to identify himself?
Previous speaker was Jack Fitzgerald, one thirty-one Plain Street.
Mr. Moderator. Move the question on the amendment, please. A motion has been made to move, and it's been seconded. So this is a two-thirds? Two, two-thirds to move?
On the amendment?
No, two-thirds to move. Yeah, to move the question. All those in favor of moving?
The majority.
Two-thirds to move it. The amendment. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So if you don't understand, all we did was cut off debate on the amendment. It doesn't mean we're voting for it against it. All we're doing is cutting off any further debate. So we'll, we'll do it again. All those in favor of cutting off debate, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries.
Motion carries unanimously. Cafeteria as well.
Thank you. So now, we're gonna vote on the amendment. Yeah. Yeah, so we're gonna vote on the amendment? Provide said police cruiser shall not be equipped with air conditioning, or any air conditioning system shall be disabled before driving. That is the amendment to the motion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no.
No.
Cafeteria?
Uh, motion does deny unanimously.
Motion does not, amendment to the motion does not pass. Is there any further discussion on the police cruiser? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Cafeteria?
Motion carries unanimously.
Motion passes by more than two-thirds. Thank you.
Mr. Moderator.
Yes, sir.
I move that the town vote to adopt the following resolution. Would you prefer it as written, or would you like me to read it, Mr. Moderator?
I think you need to read this.
Agreed. Greenhouse gas content of our atmosphere has increased alarmingly as a result of human activities with negative impact on our climate as evidenced by rising temperatures, rising sea level and ocean acidity, increased flooding with more intense and frequent so, storms, droughts, forest fires, other unpredictable weather patterns, and increased health risks, risks. Excuse me. Therefore, the Town of Millis supports a goal of eliminating or offsetting all greenhouse gas emissions originating in the town by the year two thousand and fifty or earlier, known hereafter as the Net Zero Two Thousand and Fifty Goal. It encourages the Select Board, all town boards and committees, all residents and businesses to take action in the furtherance of Millis's climate goal by developing a net-zero action plan by March two thousand and twenty-four that outlines specific strategies and sets measurable, attainable, and realistic interim targets aligned with state and federal goals, roadmaps, and incentives. This requires a simple majority.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Second.
Mr. Moderator.
Yes.
In two thousand and fifteen, Millis became a green community. Since then, we have received one point two million dollars in related grants. This article is not mandated and does not commit the town to any regulations. If approved, this article will allow the Millis Energy Committee to continue its work to secure future grants for this town. The Finance Committee unanimously recommends approval of this article.
Thank you. Further discussion?
Mr. Moderator.
Yes, sir.
Jack Fitzgerald, one thirty-one Plain Street. Again, I'm concerned about hypocrisy, not enforcing, uh, and, and just having language without any, any meat to it. And so I've moved to amend. I've given the written amendment to the clerk to add the language at the end as follows. Effective immediately, no Town of Millis public building or office shall be heated above sixty degrees Fahrenheit or cooled below eighty degrees Fahrenheit, with the exception only of the school nurse's office, the senior center, and the town jail. Do I have a second? It's been seconded.
Um, I have, I have to declare this is out of order. It's, this is a resolution, so, um, we not take amendments on it. Thank you.
Would, would you have the, the, uh, Town Council, please explain the logic behind that to me, please?
The, the resolution is just a statement, so I would, I would say there are two reasons why it's out of scope of the article. The resolution is just a, a statement of interest of, for the town if they want to pursue, uh, a certain policy objective. But what you added were mandatory actions, which, A, are outside the scope of a mere resolution, B, are tantamount to a bylaw that is, um, not presented as a bylaw in the article, and I would say, C, the subject matter of it is well beyond what is contemplated in the, uh, resolution. That would be my, uh, opinion as counsel, so I support the moderator's position on this.
Well, I'll have to abide by that, but I, I can't see how limiting the greenhouse gas emissions by keeping the heat down is inconsistent with the resolution.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Moderator. Mike Gianpietro, one twenty-one Orchard Street. I'm also the Building Commissioner. Every, uh, building that's heated is required to be sixty-eight degrees in the building code search, just so you know that, uh, for future reference.
Don't tell my wife that.
Well, I, I used to have a sixty-four, now I'm up to seventy. I'm over sixty. So, uh, just a few comments I'd like to make with this resolution. Um, just to give everyone some education on what's going on with our energy code and our environment. In two thousand and eight, the Green Communities Act was voted on by our state and became a regulation. Uh, that mandated, uh, building code changes in our energy codes. Right? And we became a stretch energy code community. Uh, there were options for cities and towns, uh, to become a stretch energy code or not, uh, from two thousand and eight to two thousand, to two thousand and twenty. So the two thousand and eight Green Communities Act mandated that we had to be fifty percent lower than the nineteen ninety emissions by two thousand and twenty. Um, as we got close to two thousand and twenty, um, the state realized that wasn't gonna happen. Uh, those cities and towns who became stretch energy code community had to follow the Massachusetts State Amendments for our building codes for existing buildings and new buildings. Why I bring this up is because everyone who owns a building is gonna be affected. Um, so now, as we move forward, uh, when we got closer to two thousand and twenty, back in two thousand and seventeen, uh, the state started talking about, what are we gonna do if we don't meet these regulations? Now, I've been involved with this since two thousand and eight as a billing official, and, uh, on the MFBO, Mass Federation of Billing Officials, we were the upfront and seemed to be the only people there, uh, at that time who, uh, raised serious questions on how we build our buildings and why we're gonna make them so tight. Uh, so when, uh, two thousand and twenty started, uh, coming closer, uh, the, the, the state, Department of Energy, Resources, and the governor passed in March, two thousand and twenty-one, uh, the Next Generation Climate Policy. So that's where we're at now. So now, what, what happens is, um, when you come in for a building permit to do work on your house, with this new regulation, uh, building codes have changed. If you're gonna renovate your existing building for a thousand square feet, anything you're gonna do, you're gonna be required to hire a HERS radar. Um, the, there is three options now. If you are a stretch energy code community, you have to follow the Massachusetts Amendments, which includes, includes a HERS radar for existing buildings. It includes a lot more restrictive, um, when they build a new house. Uh, you have, uh, uh, electrical vehicle charging stations, uh, you got HIV, EIVs, uh, you got, uh, special heating systems, uh, your R values in your windows are all gone up. Um, and the, the three options.
I just had to remind you of about one minute left.
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
I'll talk real quick.
Okay.
So you have three options. One, if you're not a stretch energy code community, to follow the two thousand and eighteen V. Second one is if you are a stretch energy code community, you follow what I just told you. And there's a third. The third is an opt-in energy code made by the DOE. The opt-in energy code further restricts work that you're gonna do on an existing home and a new home. And there's a special regulation called two twenty-five CMR, which regulates everything used for energy as it goes through a committee. So, uh, in, in closing, um, I think everyone needs to be educated on how this works, because when you come in the billing department, starting January first, and we had a couple already with renovations, uh, who's simply scratching their head to see if they can afford renovation, uh, with, with the new energy changes. Uh, just wanna make everybody aware of that. I know we have an energy committee. I didn't see the energy committee, uh, come out and explain, uh, how everybody's gonna be impacted by these changes, and I just wanted to make sure that everybody was aware of that. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? Ms. Roosevelt?
Yes. Yes, I, I can speak. Um, this is my first time speaking in a town meeting. Thanks for having me. Um, Mr. Gianpietro, everything he says is true. He's the building inspector, and, uh, I believe everything he says, and so should you. Uh, but this article is simply, um, an intent. It is a goal by Millis to be net zero in fifty years. Massachusetts, the state, the Commonwealth, has already set that as their goal. Many towns and cities in this Commonwealth have followed suit. They will all follow suit at one point, and even if they don't, it doesn't matter, they're gonna be swept along with the Commonwealth. So to be proactive instead of reactive, which is what I like to, how I like to live, um, this enables us to get grants. When we go for grants to the Commonwealth, the first thing they look at is to see if whether or not we're a green community, and what have we done toward that. This is just another step in, in making a statement explicit instead of implicit that this is our goal. We have so far gotten We have so far gotten over $1 million in grants and funding for certain projects, and that will only continue in the future. Now, as to Mr. Gian Pietro's warning that this will increase costs to housing, well, yes, it's going to increase costs to housing, but it's not the only thing that's increasing. Costs are going up incrementally every day. But there are so many programs and paybacks to this. First of all, the energy conservancy, your bills, I've seen it myself, I'm in a new home myself for the first time in my whole life, and the savings are incredible. That's number one. Rebates. The state has an incredible rebate system when you replace and when you put in new. So, the payback for your perhaps initial cost is a couple of years. You start to see the payback, and the technology is only getting better. So, we, this is, it's something we, I don't want to say it's a mandate, but it's something we will be doing. We will be swept with Massachusetts. And so, in order to be proactive and get on the gravy train of grants and funding, we believe this is the right decision to make. Thank you.
Thank you. Ma'am?
Mr. Moderator. Carolyn McNiff, 31 Timberline Road. Just some questions for either the Finance Committee or Board of Selectmen, is that about the grants money that we've gotten, but can we, I just get a few details on the kinds of things it's been used for and-
I'm going to say no. We're getting a little off-subject here. This is a policy statement for the town, so I don't think we need to get into the specifics of grants.
They brought it up.
Thank you. Sir?
Craig Gibbons, 8 Paddock Lane, current Chair of the Millis Energy Committee. Just want to bring focus to the intent of Article 15. It is not about whether we remain a green community member, of which maintaining the stretch code accommodation is part of. This is not what we're voting on. That is not what this discussion is about. It's about being forward in our intent to continue to be a member of green communities and do so in a way that favors us in terms of continued grant support over the coming years, and also not deferring our efforts to reduce greenhouse gas emissions, but to incrementally approach reductions in those as a small community like ours should and be responsible in doing so. Over the, if I may, make a comment just on the last inquiry. The $1.2 million in grant funding has been applied towards converting all of our streetlights into LED lights, improving envelopes or the tightness, if you will, of the various buildings in the town, including the school, refrigeration, new devices for heating and cooling to, again, remove some of the fossil fuel-dependent fuel systems we have and bringing in more electric and more efficient systems. So, it is an intent and a statement to step forward and say, we intend to continue to do this work. We want to embrace it as a community, and we want to remain in good favoring with the green communities to continue to gain access to those grants.
Thank you. Do you have any other information? Like, sir?
Yeah. Chris Fitzgerald, 224 Exchange Street. I oppose this article for a couple of reasons. I'm reading the language here, and this gives authority to our boards to do as they wish. I mean, they can call it realistic, but they can do what they wish. This may sound extreme, but what if they say, well, you know what, we don't want oil-
Sir, you're making opinions for someone else. Please state your thoughts.
What I'm saying is, this gives authority to our selectmen and other boards to possibly say, no more natural gas in our homes, no more oil in our homes, if they so choose. Furthermore, what about our home values? People want to move into Millis, and you want to sell a home in Millis? They're going to go, wait a minute. Why should we move into a town like this?
Sir, you're getting a little off-subject. You're making, once again, opinion.
No, I think I'm on subject here.
I don't think so. Thank you.
This is giving authority to the board.
Anything new to say, sir?
This gives authority to the boards. That's what's going on.
It's not giving any authority. If you listen, it's a policy statement. There's nothing binding about this.
Well, according to the reading of this, in my opinion, it is binding.
Well, that's your opinion. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
This is Jennifer Farrar, 7 Rolling Meadow. Can I move the question?
You don't need to. I'm going to.[902.51][902.51](Laughter). This is simple majority. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Cafeteria?
Majority approves.
I declare passes. Simple majority.
Mr. Moderator.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm going to make sure I have the right one. All right. I move that the town vote to delete Article 24 of the Millis general bylaws in its entirety and replace it with the language as written in the warrant, with the exception that the reference to this section of the bylaw should read Article 24.
Thank you. Second?
Motion made second.
For discussion?
Mr. Moderator.
Yes, ma'am.
This article, as written on page 11 of the FinCom report, was submitted by the Board of Health and would amend and replace Article 24 of the Town of Millis bylaws to remove conflicting and/or ambiguous language in the plastic bag reduction bylaw as it currently stands. The Finance Committee unanimously recommends approval of this article.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Mr. Moderator.
Yes, sir.
Jermaine, 21 Cosway Street. The wording in here says Article 23. Which is it?
It's 24 as the motion was read.
No, I'm reading what's printed.
I know. It was a typo. Thank you for picking up on that. Yes, ma'am?
Yes. Nancy Downs, 2 Meadowbrook Road. I just wanted to thank the town and the Board of Health for revising this language and wanted to point out there's no financial impact to retailers. It's literally just clearing up the definition of what a plastic bag is, as some thicker bags did come back into the community after you passed the 2019 plastic bag bylaw reduction. So, this just clears up that language and defines the different bags, and I wanted to thank the town for doing this.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Simple majority. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Cafeteria?
Motion counted.
I declare a motion passes by simple majority.
Mr. Moderator.
Yes, sir.
I move that the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of $25,000 for the Unemployment Insurance Fund.
Motion made second. For discussion?
This article adds $25,000 from free cash to the Unemployment Insurance Fund. The town is self-funded, self-insured, and this replenishes the fund.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Simple majority. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Cafeteria?
Cafeteria, the majority.
I declare a motion passes by simple majority.
I'm Article 18, and my printout has disappeared. So sorry, folks. I didn't pay attention to everything else and lost my article. So, hold on just a moment. Yeah, it's always one of us, right? And it would have to be me. Hold on. It will show up. And I did such a good job preparing. There we go. Sorry, folks. There's always one comic relief, right? Mr. Moderator.
Yes, ma'am.
No, that's not it.
Oh, my God. It's behind your article, too, I think.
Thanks. Maybe.
Can someone pass her?
Nope, that's not it.
Do you want mine?
No, I actually have a really nice write-out.
The motion of the discussion.
The discussion and everything.
Just read the motion, please.
I apologize, folks. I'm going to read the motion, and then I'll take time to explain. I move that the town vote to establish a special stabilization fund in accordance with MGL Chapter 40, Section 13. A simple majority is required.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made second. For discussion?
I do have discussion, and I apologize. I have no idea where my discussion has disappeared to. If you could give me a moment or if we could go to Article 19 and then come back-
We're not taking anything out of order. Is there any further discussion?
Mr. Moderator.
Yes.
So, this motion creates a stabilization fund, which essentially is a rainy day fund that is dedicated, that is dedicated to special education. We're not proposing to add any funds to this fund at the time, the stabilization fund at this time. But for those that have asked, why aren't we prepared for things like tuition increases and budget shortfalls? This puts that, this essentially puts that mechanism in place. There are caps of 2% of what can be put into this, so it'd be 2% of the, I'm not sure if it's exactly, hold on one second. Not sure if it's 2% of the special education budget or costs, but there is a cap of 2%. And then the Select Board and the, excuse me, the School Committee would vote to be able to use the funds when needed.
Thank you.
May I further?
This is simple majority vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Cafeteria?
Motion carries unanimously.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Mr. Moderator.
Yes, sir.
I move to dismiss that Article 19, excuse me, I move to dismiss Article 19 as there are no funds available to transfer into it.
Motion made second. For discussion?
That's weird. It's like it just disappeared.
Simple majority. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Cafeteria? Cafeteria.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously.
Mr. Moderator.
Last one.
I move the town vote to dismiss Article 20.
Motion made second.
Mr. Moderator.
Yes, sir.
This article raises the petitioner's concerns with radio frequencies, including 5G, caused by cell tower placement and wireless signal exposure. The petitioners ask the Select Board to send a letter of concern to every state and federal electoral, federally elected official, say that three times, as well as any related state and federal regulatory agency expressing their concerns. The FCC has made a decision regarding wireless signal exposure that is being contested through the judicial system, that is being monitored by our state senator, Ed Markey. Setting aside any concerns about the validity of the study this petition article is based on, any letter sent by the Millis Select Board will not add anything to the process that is already underway, that includes the executive, judicial, and legislative branches of our government. The Finance Committee received a statement of support for this petitioned article from the Millis Board of Health after our original vote to recommend dismissal of this article. The Finance Committee still recommends dismissal of this article.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Simple majority. All those in favor dismissing?
Discussion.
Please come up.
Thank you. This petition asks voters to ask-
Excuse me. I need your name and address.
Patricia Burke, 8 Eden Street, Millis. This petition asks voters to ask the administration to send correspondence about this 2021 court ruling against the FCC about its safety guidelines. It's not a partisan political issue. It's not anti-technology. It did not mention 5G. It's not anti-business. In its ruling, the court clearly outlined concern about children, the environment, testing procedures, and inadequate safety guidelines for wireless devices and infrastructure. The court's ruling has been ignored. The court is especially concerned about children because we test the safety by taking the temperature of a model based on a male military recruit's head. The outdated engineering tests come from the military, specifically the Air Force using dummies to test the landing of soldiers jumping from airplanes. The FCC ignored the expertise of other agencies, including health and environmental experts. In authorizing the millimeter waves for 5G, overrunning FAA concerns, it was necessary to backtrack and to remove 5G around airports. This was an international debacle. Holding the FCC accountable to the court order is about avoiding investments in unsuitable and unsafe infrastructure. This is about safer technology based on adequate checks and balances. Sending correspondence is a small but meaningful step that Millis voters can take. I would also ask voters to see how much Ed Markey has received from the telecommunications industry. Thank you.
Sir?
Hello, Mr. Moderator. Thank you. My name is Arthur O'Shea. I live at 368 Village Street in Millis. I am here tonight to express my support for Patricia Burke's request that the town send letters of concern to state and federal agencies regarding the known and scientifically proven harmful effects of the rapidly increasing electromagnetic radio frequencies in our environment. Please vote yes on Article 20. I love new technologies that improve our quality of life, create new jobs, and strengthen our economy. I'm not in favor of new technologies that are aggressively rolled out against our entire communities, despite the known health risks they pose to human babies, adults, and wildlife. Please vote yes on Article 20. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you. Ma'am?
Hi. Karen Hatch, 36 Forest Road. I want to support this petition. There's a lot of evidence supporting the dangers of wireless radiation. If one looks for it, you can check your Apple hidden warnings in the legal section of your phone. It'll talk about the health risks of wireless radiation. And that's the reason I don't own a cellphone. I'm a registered nurse. I've done a lot of research on this subject over many years. And other nearby places like Ashland have limits on their wireless radiation in their schools. Many other places do out west, and wireless radiation really is the smoking of our time. Thank you.
Thank you. Sir?
Mr. Chairman. Matt Fuller, 128-
I'm the moderator.
Oh, sorry.
Thank you.
Mr. Moderator.
Thank you.
Matt Fuller, 128 Plain Street, also the acting Chair of the Board of Health. So, as this was mentioned by the FinCom, the Board of Health did give a statement to the selectmen or the Select Board to tell you our favor of this. The reason for that is that while we think that there is still emerging science coming out about this, we do support the fact that there were court rulings for the FCC to do something, and nothing has been done. And although, as you just mentioned, that what is one more letter going to do? The way that politics really work is that there has to be an overwhelming support for something to really get politicians to actually take action. And so, we would submit to you that the more towns that ask Ed Markey and others to take action, the more likely action is going to happen. And in fact, Great Barrington and Sheffield have recently come out and done the same, where they have stopped 5G from expanding in their areas. And although we're not suggesting that we take action as such, we are suggesting that we take a stand and ask our local politicians to do something about it. The other thing that I would just mention as we submitted to the Select Board is that the Board of Health does submit that we think that ongoing research should continue by government agencies, and we also plan to continue to educate this town on whatever ongoing scientific evidence is generated.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Simple majority.
You've got someone else.
All those in favor?
You have someone else.
One more.
Kathy Leonens, 60th Street. Sorry, I've got bad knees. It takes me a while to get up. I would like to vote in support of just sending a simple letter. By my count, it's 14 letters, as outlined in this. And there's two factors here. First, the current regulations concerning the towers that we see in the microwave frequencies. And what the court decided is that the standards that the FCC developed in 1996 and were asked to look at again by another federal agency, the General Accounting Office, in 2018, they got 11,000 pages of documents of health effects below heating level. The standards were based, if the microwave radiation doesn't heat you up, it has no effect. 11,000 pages of studies saying that's probably an incorrect assumption. This definitely changes without heating. The FCC did nothing.
The FCC did nothing, and so they would take it to court about that. And so, currently, they still haven't responded to the court's request to provide some kind of information about why they didn't look at those 11,000 pages of science. So, that's the current microwave radiation, the towers we have. Because the microwave frequencies are essentially saturated, they're used up, the next step is to go further up the spectrum to what's called millimeter waves.
Kathy?
Yeah, just quickly.
Well, you know what? You're getting a little off subject, because I don't think, I think we understand there's questionable science out there. I think we understand the FCC isn't following what the courts are saying. So, where we're at now is, do we send a letter to our representatives?
And one sentence about Part 2.
Go ahead.
Part 2 is 5G, millimeter waves, it's in the radar spectrum. Because it's not very efficient, you need to have small cells. You need to have cells put up as little as 500 feet on telephone poles. It does impact us as a town. We hope that we develop regulations concerning this before we get applications. If we have no regulations, then there's nothing we can do to stop this. And I think every homeowner here doesn't, needs to know that they could have one of these transmitters on our telephone pole outside the house.
Thank you.
That's why I think we should send a letter. Thank you.
Just real quickly.
Real quickly.
There's one really important point here. I don't know the science. I'm not even going to talk about science. I'm going to talk about separation of powers. The town meeting is the legislative body, the, the select board is the executive body. Town meeting can't compel the select board to do anything. We'll certainly take it under advisement, but if it passes here unanimously, it doesn't force the select board to write a letter. Now, we'll think about it hard, but one branch of government can't tell another branch of government what to do. We can't walk in here and raise your taxes. We can't walk in here and spend your money. You can't tell us what letters to send. That's just a simple fact of how this works. So, please, vote on it, but understand, if it comes through with a, I'd encourage you to write letters. I think that's the best solution, if you believe in this.
Thank you. So, we are voting on dismissing this. So, if you are in favor of dismissing this, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed to dismissing it?
Aye.
Cafeteria?
I can't make the call. It's too close to call.
We will try it one more time. This is a simple majority. If you would like to dismiss this article, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Cafeteria?
Motion to dismiss that.
And it carries out front. Thank you.
Mr. Moderator?
Mr. Brewer?
I move to adjourn.
Motion made, second to adjourn town meeting. I'd like to thank you all for discussion, and have a great evening. Alls in favor, press aye. All who oppose, press a no.
Wow. She had this ready.